Okay, according to Apple time, we are at seven o'clock, so I would like to call this meeting to order. Um. Funny thing, I brought all the paperwork out. I did not review the minutes. I don't have it with me. I reviewed them when they were posted.
I I have a couple of things to.
Okay, go ahead.
Let you go, Kim.
Do you have anything, Russ?
No, no, but I'd like to hear where you're going.
Sure, some little little things. Okay, so on page two, under the Harvey Booth Free School Fund. Libraries should just be with a Y and apostrophe S. This is my teacher part. Did you Julie, did you catch that?
Yep.
Okay, and then on the last second to the last line on the same page under Hodge Park, given permission for it to be managed. Just add B. And then on page three. Um, I did, you know, under out of state registration, said that, you know, what I said was correct. About the response to the tax collector and continuing, but I also. Thought it made a suggestion to contact the company and just to see what they would do in a town our size. And because I I thought I had said that and then I looked, I've I've watched that portion again and Patrick had. Agreed to to look into it. So I just wanted to add that in because I did make that statement about. Just seeing what they said because quotes are free. That was my comment. It doesn't cost to gather information. So I just thought it'd be interesting for them or for us to understand what their plan would be in a small town like ours and not make an assumption about. The fact that they did it for Nagatuck. So I just wanted to have that added in and that's all I got. Thank you.
I can amend that.
Okay.
All right, then I guess, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept as corrected with the three corrections.
A second.
Exactly.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Great, done. All right. Next on the agenda, tax collectors report. This is the new tax season, so we have several. We have five prorated refunds, two over payments. And one exception reply. They're all one, the lowest is $7, the highest is 204. Can I get a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
I. I.
Perfect. Um, communications from the public. I see we're joined with Margaret Minor. Margaret, did you have something to add?
Uh, well, just I was, I did speak to you a couple of times about Hodge Park. Because. Certainly, a lot of people have been asking about it, but my first question was, I think this is the only public access. On the whole Chappag River. And so my first stop was Fisheries. And they said, yes, indeed, this is the only place that they will stock because. Town property, land trust, the property, private land, all of which they've been offered. Doesn't so they don't feel comfortable with a publicly funded program. Um, using access that isn't fully available to the public. Um, so I spoke to Patrick and it's a very unusual situation. In that it's not, I can remember, I think you all can remember 10 years ago, when there was a man in town. Hunted or hunted, he'd been picking up the trash and he asked. He asked the Board of Selectmen, would you? Would you designate someone and pay them to pick up the trash? Because I've been doing it as volunteer and I'm leaving town. And Barbara said then, what I think we all believed. Why should we pick it up? It's the state's job. Why should Roxbury pay someone to pick up the trash? When it's the state's job? And I think it been quite a bit of confusion. I mean, I just assumed it was a state park or half a state park or. Um, and it seems that. That both Roxbury, the town of Roxbury and the state. Are property owners there and it's not as if we own a 50% interest in the property. It looks and Patrick has the maps, so he told me this, it looks as if the state fully controls. The access. In other words, you cannot get into the park without crossing state property. Now, they may be happy to let us, but I mean. And then the so the town has a sort of peculiar landlocked park. That the state, as long as it's completely owned by the town, the state may have some qualms or scruples. About using that as the which is their only stocking space. So. I said to Patrick and to Fisheries, this is too complicated for me. I know that every just about everybody in town. Uh, that I've spoken to wants a a good solution and Patrick has been very helpful in sort of trying to investigate. What's happening, but we could not find anyone at the state. At Fisheries and Fisheries asked around with property management. No one had deep had heard about it. That Fisheries was aware of, but it could have been parks. Uh, maybe somebody called the parks and Hodge Park is not officially listed as a state park. It's not an official state park.
Because it's not, it's not a state park. It's a wayside. It's a state wayside.
State way.
So a state state wayside is a place where people can pull over and picnic. And and the state is supposed to take care of it, but the problem was happening on town property. And the state, let me finish, Margaret, because I have, you know, I know what you're saying and I have your answers. Because I was there way back when, when Connor was his name.
Connor, that's right.
Was taking care of it. The state doesn't want to take care of it. And they said to the town, if you want to take care of it, fine, you can make it a town park, but. The state, the property they own is a right of way of the state, like any right of way. And I don't know what Fisheries is talking about because I work at 75 Glen Road, right on the Pootituck River. And they stocked the river on that private property. Where people can't fish on that proper private property, but they stock the river there. Now, I don't want to screw all the fishermen in the state and have Fisheries get upset and stop stocking. From private property, but they always have for the 20 years I've worked there. We watch them throw the trout in. And I think our solution is the solution and it isn't a solution to prevent people from fishing. The when if somebody stops there on the wayside and has a little picnic. Or or is fishing, nobody's gonna bother them, okay? But if you're gonna have 70 people in a party where you have a tent. Where buck there's buckets being used as toilets and then they take those buckets and dump them in the river. We had to do something about that because the state refused DOT refuse to do anything about it. So it's not a state park, so Deep's not involved. It's a wayside. That's DOT's jurisdiction. And Fisheries certainly could stock there. Because they do, I know many private properties that they stock on. Where the public has access to the river and in the area.
Well, we don't.
That's the bottom line.
Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have access, but at any rate, Russ. What I was gonna say is I'm not arguing with anything you're saying. I have no idea. It's a complicated legal situation, wayside, pull over. Was it a right of way? Is it a property? Is it just a right of way? So I just said, I spoke to at Fisheries, I spoke to Peter Ariston. So that appeared to be his position. I am not advocating for any particular solution. Just that it's a very complicated situation and I spoke to Patrick about it. And I'm sure you all and I hope you all will come to a good resolution that will please everyone.
Well, we have. We we have, as far as I'm concerned, we pleased DOT. They're the ones who told us to take it.
I think I don't think anyone at the state level in DOT was spoken with. Patrick, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
No problem at all, Margaret. I I did.
Okay, I'm through. I just hope it'll work out well. I'm sure you all, you know, I know that Patrick's been thinking about it. I do not know. What even the complications are, much less the right answer. Other than that, we all want it to be something good for the residents of Connecticut and the residents of Roxbury.
Well, I I the DOT then should keep it and take care of it. And and when 70 people show up, deal with it and not tell us to deal with it. That's the bottom line. And as long as they won't deal with it, we will. That's basically what we came up with.
Yep.
And it's best for the river not to let people do what they were doing down there. I'm telling you right now.
Okay, thank you very.
I hear you.
Thank you very much, Margaret. I appreciate your input. Okay, any other communications from the public? All right, then we will move on to commissions and board appointments. We still have a vacancy for conservation. I have been promised that our next meeting, we will have a position for that. So that's going to be table till next month. Um, the next one is Museum Board of Trustees vacancy expiring 11/30/2025. And I am pleased to say Bob Hopkins has expressed an interest. And I would like to get a motion to appoint Bob Hopkins for the vacancy.
Oh, I make a motion to nominate Bob Hopkins.
Second.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Bob, for stepping up. That's very, very good. And he's got a great interest in the history of Roxbury and his own.
Right.
So that's awesome. Okay, on to business. So Squire Road Culver replacement was obviously delayed due to torrential rains all day. Everything is ready to go. The machines are down there. We're gonna start this tomorrow and I just checked again and there is now no rain for tomorrow. It should be done before midnight tonight and we should have, we should be good. And we're expecting this to be completed in the next two weeks. And I thank everybody, the Public Works and everybody who helped put this together. The other comment for Squire Road is I've had. Well, now about five different people from Squire Road see me over the last month, addressing the traffic and speed on Squire Road. Um, we did have a speed study that was done. We put it at the top of the hill at Squire Road. Um, just for reference, we did it for a little over a month. 15,462 cars traveled, so about 1,000 cars a day if you look at both sides. Um, the total speed average for the road is 27 miles per hour. Um, according according to the speed survey that we did, your high points. Um, Monday was 1 o'clock in the morning at 35. Um, four of the days, the highest traveled speed was between 4:00 and 5:00 AM. Except for Thursday, which was 3:00 to 4:00 AM. Those highs are 39, 45, 41, 40, and 36. Um, so we it's. Obviously not the volume of Weller's Bridge nor some of the speeds that we were looking at from Weller's Bridge. Well, no, I'm not gonna say that there's not speeding and there's some there's some traffic and all. Um, there's been several things brought up and I wanted to bring it up to the to the board to see what your thoughts were. Um, the the first was stop signs on either side of Apple Lane on Squire Road.
I have a problem with that.
Yeah.
What did you say, Russ? I'm sorry.
I don't have a problem with that.
The other one was a reduction because it's 30 miles an hour to reduce the speed to 25.
And that doesn't reduce the travel that people.
Yeah, it really doesn't.
It doesn't. It's useless to do that.
Well, you don't think that it would lower the speed in general?
No, it does. You know that, Pat. People drive what the road allows.
Yeah, 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 that. I mean, I think the road. It's not like Falls Road. Falls Road is set at 25, right?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, but yeah.
And that makes sense for that that road.
Yeah, you have a lot of houses up on the road.
Yeah, well, twisty turny. Uh, Squire is too. The 30.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's, we had looked at at Squire Road when I got with Melissa Evans. And it it was a tough road because it's it is up and down. There's not a good sightline in any direction. There's just not big straightaways on that road. So that's why, you know, you'd never be able to put any, you know, most kind of. Uh, you know, speed deterrents or speed lowering devices just aren't going to work on that because there's no straight area. So I know that we've done that. I know that the people of Squire Road are begging for something to be done, of course. And several people have, you know, come to me asking for something to be done. So that's why. I wanted to bring it to you guys to think, see what you thought, you know, and see if you had any other ideas.
Is it really more about the the volume that they're concerned about?
I mean, it's the speed. It's the speed.
So if this the average speed. Yeah, that's a tough one.
Seven, it shows there's not a problem with speed.
It's, I mean.
And it's a tough road to walk your dog on. My my advice to those people is drive to Land Trust there and walk your dog in the woods.
And I I agree. If you if you look at the front page of the Waterbury Republican today, it was it was right about that. All the increased accidents and increased fatalities that we've seen in Connecticut and the state police are putting out this message. Through the newspapers and through news. It was on some another news report as well, just today. That every town in Connecticut, you know, just, you know, locally, but on the highway as well, everyone's seen a huge increase in speed and. You know, it doesn't help when, you know, and I live on the green, when people have modified mufflers, these trucks that. You know, they have straight pipes and things that the the noise is just unbelievable some days.
Motorcycles.
And it it's, you know, they don't even have to be going that fast and it's just the roar of them coming down the road. It sounds like they're coming 100 miles an hour. Just because of the, you know, the noise.
Well, let's let's talk again about, let's just talk a little bit about the stop signs. So I, you know, I mean, what's the sightline? Coming down Apple Lane.
Okay, so come if you come down on Apple Lane, the right side is very, very visible. That would be looking where the speed sign is now. If you look the other way, it's it is, it's somewhat limited.
Right.
Um. The the stop signs are, you know, we haven't seen any accidents there.
Right.
It's not a stopping issue and. You know, I I was, my thought, my train of thought was, well, if you lower the speed limit, then, you know, maybe. Maybe they'll pull it back just a little bit. We do have 25 miles elsewhere, but I didn't think the the stop sign would make them stop, but then they take off again.
Yeah.
Get that.
Right.
And I I was. I was, you know, just maybe not as sold on the on the stop sign idea because we haven't seen an issue that requires people to stop there. Um, it's not necessarily a blind corner. The the intent and the suggestion was made to reduce speed to stop people during that.
And then forward. Before they get to the stop sign and immediately after, and then it'll go right back.
That's what.
But obviously, the data says there's not a speeding problem. That's what the data says.
Yeah, we.
And it might surprise them, but I tell you, people who stand on a road and the car goes by. You know, I've had them go to me like, whoa, slow down, and I look and I'm doing the speed limit.
Correct.
You know, so that's pretty much what this is, and I know that. A lady talked about how she walked her walks her dog on that road and how dangerous it is. Yeah, to walk your dog on any country road is gonna be dangerous. Land trust properties all over the place. Your dog will love it and you'll love it, so.
I agree, and and over the last 20, 30 years, there's been more people moving in. There's. A lot more development around here. There's a lot more people working in Brookfield and using us as a cut through, working in your shopping in New Milford and using us as a cut through. These are those arteries that people use to get from point A to point B, so there is more volume. I can't, you know, you can't, you can't lie with that.
And I think with COVID, you know, so many more people have been home and so. You know, there's this expectation. I I remember Barbara sending out a message. It was right in the middle of COVID and she said, please don't walk in the middle of the road. You guys remember that? It was so, and I went, ah, it's true, because everybody came up and was like, oh, we own the road. We can walk anywhere we want. It's like, no, this is for cars. And not understanding that they had to be careful and walk on the side of the road. It was real, yeah.
Don't tell the bike riders that. I think they've decided they own the road and.
Yeah, they.
Dangerous, it really is. I just to bring that up, there are people in this town who ride their bikes who feel. If there is an equal right of way, although they have really more of a right of way. So they ride in the middle of the lane and won't let you pass. So in order to pass, you either have to take your life in your hands, when they could easily go to the. More to the side of the road to make things safe. But for some reason, some people are purposely riding their bike in the middle of the lane. And I think that's legal. I I'm not sure, but it's stupid. I could tell you that.
Go with.
Car versus bike, you know, you may be in the right, but you may be dead. And boy, I urge those people to be careful. Just put safety first.
What's the cost of changing signs and going from 30 to 25? And, you know, once that happens, what, you know, where's the enforcement of that, which is a whole different.
But the thing is, if you change it to 25.
I know.
It's not gonna slow it down. It's just, and you're make, you can't make a decision when the data's telling you there's not a problem.
Yeah. It's the average.
The data said there's a problem, then, okay, but people have seemed to be following the speed limit there. Why lower it? That's my feeling anyway.
Yeah, so it's, it means that there's enough equal going lower and going higher.
One thing that's been nice is luckily, there is a lot of data, you know, different than finding out that we have almost 4,000 cars. Almost quadrupled the amount going down Weller's Bridge with, and they don't have nearly the 70 mile an hour spikes that we saw. With Weller's Bridge, so, you know, it's definitely a different road and there definitely are different facts involved.
Yeah.
So. Okay, we'll keep going back to the drawing board with that and notify the residents and we'll kind of see what else we can do.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so just wanted to. We're gonna make a new town hall policy and I wanted to bring it up to to the Board of Selectmen that we're gonna move to a direct deposit. System here. It'll definitely make it easier. All the payments will be done electronically. We don't have to worry about stop payments.
You don't have that now?
I know. I was surprised to hear, well, yeah.
I know.
But I do.
I I do too.
Not every, yeah, they, we offered it. But we haven't made it.
So what you're saying is now there's not gonna be checks. You gotta get it. Okay.
Correct. So they'll get a stub or whatever, and I think it's more important when it comes to people that are almost per diem. It gets a little bit more confusing and that this way we could just send it to them and then they have it. So for instance. Like bus drivers, poll workers, you know, things like that, that they may work one time whenever. So it just kind of makes it easier for them. Then you don't have to worry about lost checks or did they get them or trying to track these people down. So that's gonna do that. So we're gonna move forward with that. We are okay with that?
Yeah, much more efficient. Yep.
Excellent. Okay, so. Weller's Bridge rumble strips. This is, you know, those rumble strips definitely have more, I've gotten more complaints over the rumble strips than the speed bumps any day. Be honest with you. So, you know, I get the the opportunity in this job to do some research, so. I started asking around and I talked to Kevin at SNS Paving and he was kindly enough, kind enough to. Put a price together for grinding down. The rumble strips on Weller's Bridge and then repaving a 20 inch strip. Down the entire road. Chip ceiling's not gonna work because it's not gonna fill in the holes. There are thinner asphalt project products, one they used in Washington that kind of came up immediately and didn't work. The only thing they can say would work for sure is to. Cut it up and repave it, just that strip.
Where where in Washington? Because what they did on Baldwin. Strip is not even in the center of the road.
I agree. I hate that. When you come down the hill, you can't help but hit it.
Right, and same in Southbury on South Main.
Yep.
Past the mobile station, the strips. You gotta drive on the strip to be in the lane.
Correct, correct. I totally agree. I have not liked these things at all. I hate them.
Shouldn't the company that did this fix it?
No.
No, yeah.
We, they were, there's a signed contract by Barbara.
Okay.
From December of 2020. Because that's when I kind of kicked him out of town, because they were supposed to do South Street and Squire Road. I had to stop and just leave and Barbara and Woodbury had them do the same thing after they did Grassy Hill and she found out about it. They didn't let the town know. Um, so, so we didn't do Squire, the 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 patching, Russ, was done on Nettleton Hollow.
Uh, right, okay.
All right.
Um.
I I could agree. It makes sense to do that.
So to cut it and repave it, I got a price because it all basically is done by hand, $60,000.
What? Did you say that again and spell it? Forget it. We're gonna have to live with it. It'll be ground down by snow piles.
I I agree. I I I'm glad I was sitting down when I heard the, when I got the, actually, I was in a, I was in a training up in Simsberry. On road traffic control and road control and he, we had, and I and I was just floored. I was like. Oh, my God, that's a tremendous amount of money.
Huge amount of money.
Um, okay, so the next thing I'm gonna do is, you know, not necessarily this year project, but I I am getting a price. He hasn't gotten to me. I just checked back with him today. I just want to get an overall price for how much it would cost to pave the whole road. Just to find out.
Well, someday we're gonna have to do that, but. It's a darn good shape. We paved it when Level 3 came in. That had to be a long time ago.
It the road isn't in terrible shape, but I, you know, I've I've looked at what I feel are is every single option. To try and correct it, and that's what I'm gonna continue to do. So if I can come across something, I'll bring it to you guys' attention.
I think it's good, you know, yeah, with that kind of price, certainly, it's a. Great idea to find out how much it would be to do the whole road to be. To just to come.
$60,000.
70,000, you know. Do two things at once.
It'll be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it will be, but.
It will, but good gosh, okay.
Yeah, so that was swept off the table. It is possible. It's just not probable.
It's a shame. Yeah, okay.
Um, so I'm gonna forward it over to that. Also. On the speed bumps themselves, we had them slated to stay till like November. Um. There is a noise complaint on that 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 we had received about it for landscaping trailers and things.
Yeah.
Um.
I think.
Do you wanna? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one of the things to remember is that when we first did this, we agreed that after them being up. In place for about a month or so that we would have a town.
Correct.
Nation session or forum to get public feedback, and I think they've been up long enough for people to, you know, waste.
Yeah, we're we're gonna do like we did with the dog park, just a simple, put it out there and let people vote. We don't need to talk about it. We need to just.
Okay.
Decide. We've already talked about it, so we're blue in the face. So just. He put it up on the dog park and people got the vote and you got two votes per household and ask.
Are you gonna serve, do a survey or?
Yeah, Jimmy set it all up, did a great job, set it up. And we gave it a week and unfortunately, people didn't want a dog park there, but we we learned. Well, actually, I was one of the ones who didn't want a dog park there, but it was a senior project and I felt bad for Jason, you know.
I think the difference with this, though, I think people, I would prefer to have people have the opportunity to speak. Because this is a big deal. Just to, you know, there's the initial thought of what it was like to have them go in. You know, and I think there's, Patrick, can you, how long have they been up now?
Probably a couple of months, right?
Months.
Oh, God, we put them up in spring. I can get you an exact date that they went up. Um, I would say it was probably April or May and and I would, I would agree too, because I think, you know, this was a test thing.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it was to to get people's opinion and what it did, first of all, what the effect was. But also, is there gonna be a long term solution to this? This was never meant to be a long term solution. This was meant to be a trial.
I I do. I I do, um, I think.
We did, we did vote on the record that, you know, after a month or so, there'd be a vote, not a forum.
No, um.
I think it was a forum.
I I think, well, you'd have to look at minutes, but my point's this. And this is the plain complaints I get. A lot of people are busy. They can't come to these forums. And even though they don't live on Wellers Bridge, they feel left out when we have forums and things. They they were told that. There would be a vote and then you could have a say.
Well, the vote, I I had brought up the vote because I said the vote would be, a a vote would happen before any permanent decision was made.
Okay.
And that's how we laid it out, that we were supposed to do a forum, but I made that promise to Russ Wheeler and everyone else that brought it forward. Um, that we would have a vote before any permanent decision was made.
Right.
Because I I brought that up.
Well, then hey, you guys want a forum, I'm not gonna.
Okay, it was uh, June third.
That's when they went up. Okay.
We we had a whole summer, you know.
Yep.
So what the data, is it, can you break it down by months? We can see if there's a change, June to July to August? Because if people get got used to them and did the speed go up, you know, that kind of thing?
I'll have those facts for it.
Okay.
Are you thinking uh, end of September or early October?
Well, let's make sure you get that data back. Did you say you get data?
Oh, of course. I can pick any time.
Yeah, you wouldn't wanna have this until you have data to.
Right.
It didn't have an effect. It did have an effect and then it wore off and.
Exactly, that's.
You know, that kind of thing.
It did lower the speed. Um, we saw a reduction of eight miles per hour. Um, but the peaks, the the people flying down the road at seventy miles an hour, eighty miles an hour, those things were issues that had come up. Uh, and they were there.
Maybe we could look at the times that happens and put the cop out there, even if it's two o'clock in the morning. Catch those people.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I think this is, I think it's good. And we can do it, um, uh, virtually. I mean, more people come when they can just sign on from home.
Oh, that was, had to be one of the best, um, most attended forums that we had.
Right.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot for the end of September then, uh, and we'll uh, listen to our people.
Okay, I think that's.
Forum, but I I do want a vote. Um, we did vote for that, so.
Well, like I said, if if there, everybody's like, oh, we want a permanent, well, then we're gonna go to a vote. I agree. No, no permanent decision will be made.
Exactly.
Alright, that's fair.
And I think we should get some feedback from Public Works, you know, what is, if we did do some kind of permanent option in the spring, what does that do for uh, snow control? You know, how are we gonna work around it?
Well, there's, yeah, so, yeah, I did some research and I sent it to Patrick, I think, but what can, we can take a look at that as some of that about flowering.
Okay, perfect. Glad we brought that up. Thank you. Um. Gee, wow, there's all kinds of stuff going on today. Okay, so out of state registrations, that's my next one. Um, so I did meet with Stephanie Savoy of Savoy Investigations. Um, and they did, they said they would uh, do this as a project, um. Basically, uh, the proposal is fifty thousand dollars for the first year. Um, and they would do patrols around the area and it records plates and then they come back at a different time and they were. Record plates again and then they look for patterns.
There's not fifty thousand dollars of lost revenue because New Yorkers aren't just.
I totally agree.
Math doesn't add up.
Totally agree.
And what's with fifty thousand tonight? Fifty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, Ross, everything.
No, I.
You think you're frustrated? I have to put all this stuff together.
But it's good. So wait, wait, so before you, uh, so it was just they were going to record the. The plates and then come back in what?
And then, then we would basically send letters out explaining the process and try and do research on each of those plates.
They would do that?
No, we would do that.
Oh.
They wouldn't do it for fifty thousand dollars. Can I get a job there?
Okay.
Enough of that one. Thank you.
Well, it doesn't have an enforcement necessarily to it, so it's, it's tough in a rural community.
Yeah.
Because, you know, people are putting their cars in a garage.
I do totally appreciate the fact that you went and that that you.
Oh, absolutely. And I don't mind doing that. She's a great woman. I'll be glad to talk to her. She knows the meeting is tonight, so I'll give her uh, an update for tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, we can put that to bed.
Yes, we can.
Yay.
Wrapping things up. Um, next on the agenda, short-term rentals in town. Kim, do you have anything?
I don't have anything extra. I mean, I looked up today or, you know, just some prep to see if there was anything new out of Groton, because that's the. Town that I was using, but um, they just, they had an open forum for people to speak about, you know, the pros and cons. And they were going to um, have a vote uh, in a town vote, like in September. But um, so there's nothing, no change. It just really was a chance for you two to kind of take a look at the information, see what you thought about it. I did speak with, um, I talked to John Cody today and just to tell him that, you know, something that I, that was brought up and. You know, he, you know, he said that uh, he felt it, because he was working on a. Uh, a form, you know, and for maybe a special uh, event form. And I was talking to him about the fact that it could be a form, a registration for these. Um, short-term rentals so that we could gather information and knew where they were, you know, and gave him a little background. He thought it was a good idea, but. You know, just as someone who is an enforcement officer, you know, thinks that he has to kind of deal with, but. Um, I think it'd be helpful for police to know, uh, and for us as town employees to know. Uh, what's taking place in town and where these things are and if people are safe where they are. And it's really, for me, it's about safety. You know, uh, and being able to get, have the information necessary in order for um, people to be. Uh, assisted if necessary, you know, how to help them.
But I agree, like from a contact information, we have nothing.
Nothing.
Um, the good news is, uh, I I know of no issues. Um, of anything getting out of hand or parties getting out of hand or any complaints on any of these, uh, and there's. You know, after uh, last month's meeting, I went back and I started looking on the Airbnb and Airbnb. I was shocked. I was shocked.
Right, there's a lot.
So many. There's so many.
Yeah.
Um, and they're all over. They're literally all over.
And I think the big thing, you know, that people were talking about in Groton when they had the um, public forum that. Several residents said, well, it should be going through the planning and zoning, but they don't realize or fail to realize that. That only works for any project or any short-term rentals going forward. It's not retroactive. So the ordinance is the only way to take care of all short-term rentals that currently exist and.
Yeah, that, that was clear in what you gave me to review. Um, let me play devil's advocate and sound like a libertarian.
Oh, good.
Um, I I I hear what you're saying about registering, but I do, I I wonder. Sometimes government gets way too much into our lives. And if I own a house and I want to rent it out on V-Bro, that should be my business. And every time something popular comes along, the government tries to come in, gotta register it. Then the next thing you know, there's gonna be fees and all this other stuff and government doesn't really do anything to, for those fees. Uh, that's my only point is that I think that. I'm opposed to it because I think if I own my house and I want to rent it out, that should be my business. I I think that if um, we can't find who a contact is that. How do you find them when there's a fire and nobody's home and and they're weekenders? How do you find them? Uh, but but at the same time. I I hear you on registrations and I don't have, I think that's a harmless, uh, good way to go to find out who's doing this.
But you know what? You just brought up a good point, Russ, that every single one of these houses has an alarm system.
No.
But when one of these things happens.
They don't. They all don't have.
I'm sure. Really?
Oh, yeah, no. No, that that's.
I would think they, oh, because most of them sit vacant for a good amount of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, two points. That that's number one. I hate, government's been a little too intrusive lately, I think, from all points. And um, and that's it. I it's basically that and um. If we don't have a problem, why are we making a problem? There's not a problem. We haven't had a problem. I did hear Kim say, we should get in front of it and then, okay, I, you you know, that's a good point. You know, you don't want to govern from behind. You don't want to wait till there's a problem and say, geez, we don't have an ordinance. Uh, to to do anything about it. So I'm I'm neither negative or positive on this thing. Um, I don't think it's a high priority.
No.
But if if we wanted to move forward and do registrations, I I think a lot of people wouldn't register. I could be wrong. I I know people doing Airbnbs and they're not even zoned to have an accessory dwelling, so. You know, I'm sure those people aren't gonna, gonna register, but I don't have a problem if we do a registry.
That's a good point, because some of these are a room. These are, like, people can rent a room for the night, you know.
Some of these are apartments over garages that they built for their kids to live in.
Yeah, or a guest house.
Kids aren't there anymore.
Yep.
And they're they're V-Broing, but I don't have any problem with that. I mean. Let them rent, let them bring in some revenue, you know.
I agree. I totally agree. Because I I use them, you know, I I use.
Oh, me too.
All those.
Iceland, Iceland was awesome.
Oh, great.
Doing V-Bro, yeah.
Uh, the um, in terms of letting people do what they want, it's just a good reminder, though, that our zoning regulations do. Require registration of B and Bs and it's been in on the books for years and years. So bread and ba- uh, bed and breakfast. So if they're gonna serve breakfast, they're technically a B and B and they should have. Um, uh, permit for for that.
Yeah, but I'm.
But that's not what this, that's a total different.
I rent the room and I make my own breakfast.
Exactly. So but that's my point, is that we already do regulate something that's similar, you know, and. That's, but you know, that's something that is off to the next uh, level. Um, so again, I'm not looking to make a bunch of money on this. It's really more about safety and registration.
So registration's a good idea.
Yeah, and we could.
I wouldn't be opposed to a motion on that.
Yeah, this is not something we have to rush into. We can, they'll take a little, I'll write it.
Take a little time and think more about it.
Let's look at what Groton's gonna actually come up with. I mean, if that's the only town that's even looking into that, I don't know that we need to be.
It's not.
Right on leading the forge, but.
You know, it's it's not, but it's the one that's the most organized.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I I kind of picked them because, you know, they had something pretty well-written and I thought it was well-thought-out and they. They, this had been actually in the works for two years. They had a subcommittee working on it and so it's like, oh, thank you for doing all that work. But, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll take it from here.
Right, that's kind of how I thought. And, alright, well, that that's good. Um, and it was just, you know, those, those. In in particular, those contacts or those um, contact points that they were working through. So anyway, so I.
So we're gonna, we'll, we'll, what we'll do is uh, we're gonna table this for now and we'll revisit it again.
Okay.
Whenever you guys would like.
Okay.
And then we can start watching some of the towns where they go over. And I'll, I'll be honest, if I hear anything, any bit of a bad rumble about anything. I'll definitely bring it to the attention of the board.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Perfect. Um, okay, Kay, next up is uh, Hodge Park. Um, so I have, obviously, I have had some feedback um, on Hodge Park. And uh, this has nothing to do with that, that decision, although the park has stayed very clean. Um, we had some people down there Sunday. Butch went down there for me, um, and basically said, just clean up after yourselves. Um, by the time I got done with, uh, I was at the tractor parade in Bridgewater, um, judging it. When I came back. Um, the last truck was pulling out and there was not, there was nothing on the ground, not one piece of litter. Um, so I was pretty happy about that. You know, I don't, I don't know that we need to, you know, the enforcement is not the point of this. It's the cleanliness and it's respecting. So there were some people there. Um, but the the thing that I wanted to talk about at the meeting, um, is I feel like. After we made the decision, um, I put up the Roxbury Residence sign. This was not a sign that I created. Um, this is in Spanish and in English. Um, this is the same sign that is found at Chase Park and Sherman Park. And they were leftovers that were in Public Works. The problem that I have with it is it says Roxbury Residence only. Permit required. And we had this discussion at the Board of Selectmen with our park permits.
Yes.
Um, and I don't feel like that should say Roxbury Residence only.
I agree.
It should say permit required. What are your thoughts?
I like that.
Because if not, then I think part of the. Feedback that we had got and the negative feedback that I'd gotten from Hodge Park, um, because there was uh, three different people. Through email, um, that called me out that because we have the Spanish side. Um, that nothing else was in Spanish. The only thing that was in Spanish was the penalty. I said, okay, you got me there. And I, and I agreed it also. So what does that say? And I, and I get it. And I, and I, I, I look at having the Spanish as inclusive. So what also might be good is to take the littering sign and make that in Spanish also.
Well, I kind of oppose because I believe English is our language and that's what we should all stick to. Um, but people will tell you, well, a lot of these people don't know how to speak English. Well, may they. They're not stupid people at all. They they know English enough.
Um, if they have a driver's license and they came to drive there, they saw the stop sign, they saw everything.
English and Spanish unless you're in an airport, I'm really. But I agreed. I never intended to say that we'll take H- Hodge Park and it could be Roxbury Residence only. If somebody wants to stop there and have lunch from wherever, or if they want to go fishing for an hour or two. Absolutely, I don't want to make that Roxbury Residence only. My is, my issue has always been that people who abuse it and when they come in force. It's upsetting to the neighbors and it's dangerous to have that many people on that road. And that was the intent all all along. So I think you're right on, Pat. Take the Roxbury Residence only sign. Take the Spanish out of it.
Okay.
You know, they know you don't litter. They know there's a fine if you don't have a permit. They could read ninety. Um, don't you think, Kim, or?
Yeah, so you know, in our minutes from the last meeting, we a- agreed to have it a permit-only park.
Mm-hmm.
Never actually said Roxbury Residence only, so.
All that is, is the same sign. This, these signs have existed for years at Chase Park and Sherman Park.
You just recycled them. That's all. You were recycling.
Uh, that's, I found them in the back.
You were being sustainable.
Very good. So I think, but now I think you have to have a different sign. I agree with with.
Okay, I'm gonna change the sign and then are we agreeing to remove the Spanish sign then? Or do we want to do litter in Spanish? Okay, so we'll just, we'll just cut it. Got it.
I I think simplicity is gonna be best. You know, if if you have an icon that says no littering, you know, with something with a line through it, that's, that's gonna be universal, so.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, words won't be necessary there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And when my Italian cousins come here, they'll understand too.
Oh, so you know, the only other thing would be, how will they know where to get a permit?
Well, everybody knows you go to town hall and ask.
They don't.
Go online, right?
I mean, uh, we'll, can assign, you know, say something.
So it's, if it's.
Good idea. Permit available at town hall.
You know, just something that, otherwise it's like, well, what, what, you know, what town am I, am I in and. You know, if they're just gonna come by. And some will just take a chance and then sit for thirty minutes and, you know.
Permit available at Roxbury Town Hall?
Yep.
That way it's not saying Residence only.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Um, because that had come up with the um, Greenwich case that you had brought up last, uh, last meeting. Also, Russ. Um, okay. Next is housing plan.
Yes, this should be the last time we have this on there, but um, uh, Jocelyn's uh, just tweaking. Uh, getting off the big. Uh, getting off the big draft thing that comes across the, each page and that's supposed to be submitted to the state um, by around, before October first. And then it's fine and I'll get it, uh, that link and it'll go up on the website and uh, we should be good to go at that point and then it will. Become part of the P O C D as well.
Great job, Kim.
Be attached to that. Yeah.
Bravo.
It was great, it was love.
It's not easy.
Yeah.
No, there was a lot of, a lot of meetings. Um, okay, back to me. Town Hall upgrades, Public Works upgrades, um. Kitchen, other than a bad cabinet that has to be replaced, which came in today, hopefully I'll get that wrapped up by next uh, next month and uh, the backsplash will be in and then that's completely done. Um, yesterday, uh, they started sheet rocking the ceiling in Public Works.
I gotta look at it. That's gonna be awesome.
Great. It's a little over halfway done. By the end of the week, they're gonna have the ceiling ready and then we have to remove everything from the walls and then they're gonna, they can start painting and acid wash or chemical washing the walls. I don't know what they're exactly, or they're gonna do. Um, I've started to get lighting uh, quotes. And hopefully I'll be able to put that. It's hard to get uh, contractors right now, as we all know. Let alone to give you a price. Um, I go through so many calls just to, just to get somebody, so um, I have one, only one price. At this point, but uh, again, hopefully next meeting I'll have something on that. Uh, but the sheet rock's gonna look great. Uh, it is a lot of work. There's a lot of cutouts and a lot of stuff there, um, but that's pretty exciting.
Are they taking down the old or are they?
No, it's actually, they went over it. It's actually half-end sheet rock that was up there, but I think when they built it, they didn't use five eights.
Oh, alright, so it's not.
That was uh, nineteen sixty-four. Russ, would you know? I don't know. I, I'm not saying you're old or anything.
Oh, come on, nineteen sixty-four.
There was no way it was coming out good, Russ, I'm sorry.
I was seven.
Living in a different town, me too.
We look at you for your excellence, Russ, only.
Thanks, Pat. That was good.
Okay, alright, I'm moving on.
Alright, moving on.
Uh, okay, um.
You can't, he can't forget that you, you and I are the same age, Russ, so.
Yeah, oh, good.
Right.
Kim, do you know if there was five H G rock was used? So anyway, so then uh, then painting and then lighting and yay. Um, okay, next on the agenda, Bridges Culverts Update, um. So I got an updated schedule on Davenport, uh, right now. They're waiting for the form liners that make it look like stone when they pour the concrete. Um, as of last week, I finally asked for a definitive timeline because that's been, I've been tough to get that. Uh, and right now we are at October twenty-second.
Oh, okay.
Now, I will say that's as of last week, um, when I went down there today, um, the footings are easily under two feet of water. Um, this morning, there was just a breach of their water containment system and there was just too much water for it to hold. Um, so there was nobody really working there today that I saw, um, but it's, it's gonna take a little bit to get that open again and that may cause us a, a little bit more of a delay, so I'm just kind of prefacing myself for that, but we are still looking at October. Um, and honestly, it's just been between waiting for the steel and waiting for everything else. It's just been delay after delay.
Yeah, I've gone down, I've gone down and looked at it. Actually, we had a permit application from the people who live right there.
Yep.
To clean their pond.
Yeah.
I told them, wait till this is over, but looking at it from a wetlands viewpoint, they're doing a good job.
Absolutely.
Very happy.
No question, no question. Just take it a while, that's all.
Yep.
Um, actually, this morning, there was uh, just north of Davenport, there was a tree down, power out.
Oh.
Tree across one ninety-nine, um, and I, that's why I ran up there because I was afraid school buses wouldn't get through, but. EverSource did a great job getting it out of there before, before the buses came through this morning because it's, there's no way around.
Yeah, right, right.
Makes it tough. Um, Botford Hill, uh, from the storm, I was down there this morning and we have Mark Murray uh, rebuilding that and that held up great. It's looking good. I don't have to worry about anything else. It's not done yet, but he's doing a great job. Uh, again, the rain may slow things up a little bit, but uh, hopefully now that it's gonna dry off, we'll be good.
What's his ETA, you know, or?
I do not have that. I do not have that for tonight. My apologies, but I will have that.
Just curious.
Sorry, he's making a note. Um, okay, budget uh, capital expense stays on there. Um, the bridge survey is underway uh, currently, so we're gonna hit all the bridges that haven't been done. I've already started. Um, next year's capital list of some of the bridges that I think uh, that we need to hit, um, like. Uh, Bacon Road at Grassy Hill and there's some other ones that uh.
Yeah, definitely.
Need to be fixed up. Those culverts, uh, that's probably gonna be uh, like a next year project. Start hitting those culverts one. One at a time. Those are much smaller culverts than what we're dealing with now, um, so I have no doubt that Public Works will be able to take care of it.
Yeah.
I'm pretty psyched about it.
Yep.
Um, I did finally get a call, um, about five, six months ago, I believe it was March. Um, we put in an order for a Ford truck, um, and we had to get in on that order because they were making a, uh, we were gonna lose a spot. Um, well, we have a VIN number and we are in production. Um, by the time we get it, it will be uh, for snowfall. Let's hope. Um, that's how long this process takes to get a truck now. Um, also, truck eight is uh, under, still under construction and we will have that for the winter as well. Um, so that'll be two trucks, a, a new truck and a completely repaired truck.
Excellent.
Um, also, uh, from an ARPAFUN standpoint, um, Senior Center, uh, and their broadband and their hookup and screen and all that kind of stuff. Uh, is going in, that uh, should be happening uh, shortly. Uh, at least they're gonna start it. I still don't expect that project to be done till probably about Christmas. Uh, but they're very, very excited and we're moving forward. Um, we did, uh, after our last meeting, we had uh, the, the yearly steep grant applications went in. Um, so I did put in three different steep grant applications. Uh, we will know September fifteenth if we were awarded any of them. Um, it had to be something that was shovel-ready, uh, so I put Public Works and Squire Road uh, into those. Um, as well as paving of Town Hall and Public Works. You know, it'd be great money if we could have it. Um, we would need to, if we did get something for Squire Road. Um, we would have to go back to uh, um, moving the funds around, but that money could go towards like the Bacon Road culverts, uh, things like that. So it's just be a great use of taking our funds and moving them someplace else. We have to, may have to go to a town meeting uh, to make that happen, but uh. I wasn't gonna leave money on the table, so I put all the, put as many grants through as I possibly can. And I will continue to do that, um, and I, I am uh, continuing to talk with uh, legislators every time I see them, uh, because I, I feel that. Uh, local towns are not getting enough infrastructure money. Um, and I've been voicing my opinion uh, as much as I possibly can on a state level. Uh, they still haven't made a decision on their infrastructure package, on what percentage they're gonna go to on the local road and bridge program, um, but hopefully it'll be something. Um, more than what it is now. Uh, that would be a great savings for our taxpayers.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's all I have, other than Fire Marshal and Resident Trooper. Okay, so I have two months. We didn't have a um, a, a report last month. Um, last August, uh, Fire Marshal inspected Pickett and Fiddlin. Um, they've done some tweaks, but it was fine. Several tanks pulled. There were no contaminations noticed. Uh, and several questions on insurance carriers and two blasting premises, permits, that was for the August of July. Uh, and now the September reading, uh, Fire Marshal's in office inspected a tent at Herblore Park for a wedding. And a blasting permit was issued. Training has started up once again and this month's topic was on sprinkler systems.
Okay.
Uh, Resident Trooper, eight criminal, non-criminal investigations, one accident investigation, seven infractions, seven warnings and two hundred and thirty-eight miscellaneous requests. Uh, for service, um. In his report, he does notice, because we uh, we meet several times a week, uh, Matt, and, and, and go over a lot of things. Um, that's a great partnership and he's doing a great job. Um, he is uh, looking for additional part-time officers. We're, we have extra shifts approved this year. Um, but we're still running in a deficit, so we're gonna see if we can bring on somebody part-time, you know, again, to do traffic details around and. You know, keep an eye on Squire Road and Wellers Bridge and South Street and all the other speeding roads.
Falls Road, don't forget Falls Road.
Falls Road, correct.
You know, I, I do, when I talk to people, they do say, I never see police, you know, and.
It's been tough lately.
It has, it has, and they really miss knowing that someone is there and watching out, so.
I, I, I would agree. The best way to control somebody is to put someone there. If they don't see anybody, every time they go by, they're getting faster and faster.
I agree, yeah.
I'm happy when I don't see police. People are talking about. But yeah, okay.
So.
You drive around here on a Sunday morning, you don't see anybody.
No, I know, it's so quiet.
Beautiful, I love it. You don't see anybody.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna add Garnet Road to patrols now, too.
Good luck. Let them sit in my driveway.
Just kidding.
That's good.
Awesome. Okay, uh, that's about what I have. Any uh, other business?
Nope.
That was a great meeting. Thank you both.
As always, good job.
Enjoy you both very much, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
All in favor, aye.
See y'all soon.
Alright.
Night, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you, Julie.